Well, good evening to everyone. Thank you for joining us again for another edition of our midweek Bible study. We are going to go into a fifth session of our study in Exodus Salvation using the tabernacle in the wilderness as our pattern. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the coverings. And so I'm grateful that you have joined us tonight. I would like to ask that you would right now go ahead and share this live stream with your network. As you're sharing it with your network, if you have not already liked our page, like our page. If you're watching us in YouTube, as you share it, go ahead. If you've not subscribed, then subscribe to our YouTube channel. And if you're in Facebook, you can also start a watch party and invite people to watch it along with you. We are so thankful that you are here with us, and we pray that you are being blessed by these particular studies. As we get started tonight, let me have a word of prayer with you. So Father, we thank you and we bless you for another opportunity to study in your Word. We thank you, oh God, that as we study tonight, that you would allow your Holy Spirit to bring fresh revelation over the lives of your people, that they might see in this teaching tonight, a word that is a rehma word for their very lives. I thank you now that you take me and hide me behind the cross, cause me to decrease that you might increase all the more. And I bless you and I praise you for what we will receive tonight in the mighty powerful name of Jesus. Amen. Glory to God. Let me say right from the outset that I'm thankful to God for my spouse, my wife, Lady Cece, who is assisting me tonight, also Minister Ruth, who is assisting me tonight. Couldn't do this without them, and we're grateful, I'm grateful especially to them. Well, let's go ahead and get into our study tonight. As I said, tonight, we are talking about the coverings. Now, as you look at this diagram of the tabernacle, the particular part of the tabernacle that we're talking about again tonight, we talked about it last week, but we talked about the entrances. Tonight, we're talking about the coverings. So in essence, we're talking about the roof of the tabernacle. And what you need to understand about the roof, and we can go ahead to one of those slides to put the next slide up, I believe, is that the roof of the tabernacle, that it consisted of two inner curtains. You can go to the very next slide, if you would please, just right to the next slide. Did I not put anything about the roof? Okay, that's all right. So the roof of the tabernacle, it consisted of two inner curtains and two outer curtains, not curtains, but coverings, and each of them were different from the other. Together, the curtains and the coverings, they speak of the glorious person and the victorious work of Jesus. So the text that I'm looking at tonight, we're looking first of all, Exodus, chapter 26, verses 1 through 14. And this forms the foundation along with another passage from Exodus for the teaching tonight. So in Exodus, we read, "Moreover, you shall make the tabernacle with ten curtains of fine twisted linen, in blue and purple and scarlet material. You shall make them with cherubim, the work of a skillful workman. The length of each curtain shall be twenty-eight cubits; and the width of each curtain, four cubits. All the curtains shall have the same measurements. Five curtains shall be joined to one another, and the other five curtains shall be joined to one another. You shall make loops of blue on the edge of the outermost curtain in the first set; likewise you shall make them on the edge of the curtain that is outermost in the second set. You shall make fifty loops in the one curtain, and you shall make fifty loops on the edge of the curtain that is the second set, is in the second set. The loops shall be opposite each other. You shall make fifty clasps of gold, and join the curtains to one another with the clasps, so that the tabernacle will be a unit. Then you shall make curtains of goat's hair for a tent over the tabernacle. You shall make eleven curtains in all. The length of each curtain shall be thirty cubits; and the width of each curtain, four cubits. And the eleven curtains shall have the same measurements. You shall join five curtains by themselves, and the other six curtains by themselves; and you shall double over the sixth curtain at the front of the tent. You shall make fifty loops on the edge of the curtain that is outermost in the first set, and fifty loops on the edge of the curtain that is outermost in the second set. You shall make fifty clasps of bronze, not gold, but bronze, and you shall put the clasps into the loops and join the tent together, so that it will be a unit. The overlapping part that is left over in the curtains of this tent, the half curtain that is left over, shall lap over the back of the tabernacle. The cubic on one side and the cubit on the other of what is left over in the length of the curtains of the tent, shall lap over the sides of the tabernacle on one side and on the other to cover it. You shall make a covering for the tent of ram skins dyed red, and a covering of porpoise skins above." All right, now let's look at chapter 36, verses 8 through 19. "All the skillful men among those who were performing the work made the tabernacle with ten curtains of fine twisted linen, and blue and purple and scarlet material, with cherubim, the work of a skilled workman, Bezalel, made them. The length of each curtain was twenty-eight cubits; and the width of each curtain, four cubits. All the curtains had the same measurements. He joined five curtains to one another, and the other five curtains he joined to one another. He made loops of blue on the edge of the outermost curtain in the first set; he did likewise on the edge of the curtain that was outermost in the second set. He made fifty loops in the one curtain, and he made fifty loops on the second, excuse me, on the edge of the curtain that was in the second set. The loops were opposite each other. He made fifty clasps of gold, and joined the curtains to one another with the clasps, so that the tabernacle was a unit. Then he made curtains of goat's hair for a tent over the tabernacle, and he made eleven curtains in all. The length of each curtain was thirty cubits; and four cubits the width of each curtain. The eleven curtains had the same measurements. He joined five curtains by themselves, and the other six curtains by themselves. Moreover, he made fifty loops on the edge of the curtain that was outermost in the first set, and he made fifty loops on the edge of the curtain that was outermost in the second set. He made fifty clasps of bronze to join the tent together, so that it would be a unit. He made a covering for the tent of ram skins dyed red, and a covering of porpoise skins above." The roof consisted in two inner curtains and two outer coverings. Together, they speak of a glorious person and glorious work of Jesus. So let's talk about, that last part I just read was not Scripture, but that was my commentary. Let's talk about the inner curtains. All right, so the inner curtains of the tabernacle in Exodus, chapter 26, verse 6, it says, and this comprised of the roof of the main structure, but in Exodus 26, verse 6, we read these words. Exodus 26 and verse 6. "You shall make fifty clasps of gold, and join the curtains to one another with the clasps, so that the tabernacle will be a unit." So the roof was one continuous unit, and it was held together by these clasps of gold on the roof particularly. Now, there were scriptural specifications, and let me remind you again, that as it relates to the scriptural measurement, we don't use the measurement of cubits today, but this was by way of reminding you, a cubit equals approximately 21 and a half inches. So what we read in the text, and I'm going to bring the significance out of this to you in a moment, but let me just line this out for you, that when it comes to the inner curtains, that there were ten in number, ten inner curtains. Each curtain measured 28 by four cubits, or catch this, 218 feet by seven feet. And they were sewn together into two sets of five. And then they were joined by 100 blue loops and 50 golden clasps. Now, it's important for you to remember all of this, because later on, we will see where every family in the Levitical tribe had a specific responsibility for some of these very specific pieces of the tabernacle. Now, the curtains themselves were made of fine twined, or the new American Standard Bible says twisted, so of fine twined linen that was embroidered in the colors blue, purple, scarlet, and then on them, it had angels or cherubim. The complete curtain was stretched across the tabernacle from north to south, which left one cubit exposed on the north and the south sides. Lengthwise, it covered the roof and the west side completely. So Minister Ruth, if you could back up to the opening graphic that shows the picture of the tabernacle, just if you kind of remember your place, and just go back and click on that one picture of this. I want you to see what we're talking about here, as again, we're talking about the coverings. So as you look at the tabernacle in the center, you've got a roof, and then the sides come down like you would imagine a tent. So unlike a tent that you might be accustomed to, there's no point at top, there's no peak. The top is flat, all right? But the measurements, as you can look at this, each, it looks like one piece, but it's all made into one piece, but it really was made from separate pieces together. And so you can see that it stretched the entire length of the tabernacle from north to south, and then left one cubit exposed on the north and south sides. So as you can see, on the north and the south sides, it hangs over. And then on the west side, the west side, it covered it completely, because remember, you entered through the east side. So let's come back now to the spiritual significance of this. And the significance of this is very important, and I know a lot of this seems like busy work, and your head might be spinning with all these measurements, but let me tell you that it really does have some value and some meaning. So how are we to interpret all of this? Well, let me talk about it in two separate ways. Let's talk about the significance of the materials, and then I'll come to the significance of the measurements. So when we first look at it in terms of the material, remember it said that these curtains were made of finely twined or twisted linen. So linen itself is symbolic for the humanity of Christ. Remember that Jesus was at the same time fully God and fully man. So linen speaks of His humanity, it speaks of His humanness. The fact that it was not just linen, but it was finely twined or twisted linen, it symbolizes the unity that exists in His personality. Let's look at the Scripture for a moment. Luke, chapter 1, verse 35. "The angel answered and said to her, 'The Holy Spirit will come upon you, and a power of the Most High will overshadow you; and for that reason the Holy Child shall be called the Son of God.'" So within the Godhead, there is a trinity. This is not three separate gods, it's not even three separate modalities, this is, if you will, three distinct personalities, but it's one God. So here in this text, you have the Holy Spirit, you have God, and then you have the Father, and then you have the Son. So the twisted linen, you know how we speak of the Scripture? We use the Scripture, Lady Cece, when we talk about marriage, about how a three-quarter strand is not easily broken? Well, that's also speaking of the Trinity. You've got God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit. So this linen was made of finely twisted pieces of linen, that they were twisted together, not necessarily braided, but twisted together, and that's what made up the material, and that's what it symbolizes. Hebrews, excuse me, Romans, chapter 1, verses 3 and 4. Paul writes, "Concerning his son, who was born of a descendant of David, according to the flesh, who was declared the Son of God, with power by the resurrection from the dead, and according to the Spirit of holiness, Jesus Christ our Lord." So Paul speaks of the unity in his personality as well. Look at the Gospel of Mark. Mark, chapter 1, verse 21. "What business do we have with each other, Jesus of Nazareth? Have you come to destroy us? I know who you are, the Holy One of God." Now, this is that series of demons that are speaking to Jesus directly. Luke, chapter 23, verse 47. "Now when the centurion saw what had happened, he began praising God, saying, 'Certainly this man was innocent.'" And then lastly, 1 John, chapter 2, verse 1. John writes, "My little children, I am writing these things to you, so that you may not sin; and if anyone sins, we have an advocate with the Father, Jesus Christ the righteous." So linen speaks of Christ's humanity, and the finely twined or twisted linen tells us that there is a unity in His personality. But then we come to the colors, and we've looked at blue already, but let's look at it again. The blue represents the mystery of Christ's divinity. Now, the linen speaks of His humanity, but the blue speaks of His divinity. Remember the Athanasian Creed? He was very deus, very homo, in Latin, translating into English, he was truly God and truly man. So as we look up, as we look up to the sky, we see serene and unsullied blue of God. Yeah, those who are watching us online, we are located here in North Carolina, and here in North Carolina, there are people who are sports fans of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, who are called the, well, they refer to Carolina blue. And one of the things that, because they have that light blue as their color, and one of the things they like to say is that God is a Tar Heel fan, because otherwise, why would the sky be Carolina blue? Well, listen, let me tell you, the sky is that color, not because God's a fan of the Tar Heels, but it's that color because it's speaking of the mystery of Christ's divinity. And whenever we look up to the sky and we see that blue, what we're looking at is the serene and unsullied blue of God. Psalm 19, verse 1, puts it like this. "The heavens are telling the glory of God, and their expanse is declaring the works of His hands." Isn't that good? And then 1 Timothy, Paul writes to his son Timothy, 1 Timothy, chapter 3, verse 16. "By common confession, great is the mystery of godliness. He who was revealed in the flesh, was vindicated in the spirit, seen by angels, proclaimed among the nations, believed on in the world, taken up in glory." So linen speaks of His humanity, but blue speaks of His divinity. But then we come to purple. I love purple. Purple speaks of the majesty of the regalness of Christ. It speaks of the majesty of the regalness of Christ. You see, the color purple is the color of royalty. So when you see purple, purple is declaring the kingly character of Jesus, the kingly character of Jesus. So Isaiah, chapter 9, verses 6 and 7, we read these words. "For a child will be born to us, a son will be given to us, and the government will rest on his shoulders, and his name will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace." Psalm 2, verse 7, verse, let me look at the, is that Psalm 2? Oh, okay, the next verse. "There will be no end to the increase of his government or of peace, on the throne of David and over his kingdom, to establish it and to uphold it with justice and righteousness. From then on and forevermore, the zeal of the Lord of hosts will accomplish it." And then Psalm, chapter 2, verse 6, says, "But as for me, I have installed my king upon Zion, my holy mountain." And then 1 Timothy, chapter 6, verse 10, verse 15, excuse me, "which he will bring about at the proper time, he who is the blessed and only sovereign, the King of kings and the Lord of lords." So purple speaks of the majesty of His regalness. "You, O Lord, are indeed the King of kings and the Lord of lords." But then comes scarlet, scarlet. Scarlet is a type of red, and scarlet speaks of the quality of Christ's humility, the quality of Christ's humility, scarlet. So when we think about this, Adam, who was our first parent, Adam means literally red earth. And it's significant, because the earth in Palestine, which is where Israel is located, and was located even at that time, the earth itself in Palestine is red. But let me go a little bit further, because Psalm 22, verse 6, speaks about worm scholar, scarlet. Psalm 22, verse 6. "But I am a worm, and not a man, a reproach of men, and despised by the people." The worm scarlet points to the brilliant color that was produced from the death of a certain type of insect, and because that is so, scarlet speaks or is a symbol of death. Philippians, chapter 2, verse 8, we read these words. "Being found in appearance as a man, he humbled himself by becoming obedient, to the point of death, even death on a cross." All right, so scarlet speaks of the quality of Christ's humility. So we have the linen, we have the blue, we have the purple, we have the scarlet, but then we come to the cherubim. The cherubim is another way of saying angels, and the cherubim speaks of the intensity of Christ's severity. So with the curtains, not only were they embroidered with these colors, but then they were also embroidered with the cherubim of these angels. And by being embroidered onto the cloth, they are speaking of the severity of Christ's judgment. You see, Jesus is the lover of our souls, but He is also the coming judge of the world. So when we shall meet Jesus face to face, we shall all be judged. The Bible says, "There is appointed unto every man, wants to die, and afterward the judgment." Look at Acts, chapter 17, verse 31. "Because he has fixed the day in which he will judge the world in righteousness through a man whom he has appointed, having furnished proof to all men, by raising him from the dead." John, chapter 5, verse 22, says, "For not even the Father judges anyone." Get that? "Not even the Father judges anyone, but he has given all judgment to the Son." And then Romans 11, 22. "Behold, then, the kindness and severity of God to those who fell severity, but to you, God's kindness. If you continue in his kindness, otherwise you also will be cut off." So here we have with the material, we have linen, we have blue, we have purple, we have scarlet, and then we have the cherubim. I want you to note that the two sets of curtains are made one by loops and by clasps. Now, the loops were blue, and the blue loops, even though blue speaks of Christ's divinity, the blue loop itself speaks of His divine holiness, and the golden clasps speak of His divine righteousness. So you have holiness and righteousness. What's the significance? Well, holiness tells us what is in the character of Jesus, while righteousness shows us His Did you all get that? So on the one hand, the Bible tells us that we are to be holy. Why? Because God is holy, and holiness speaks of His character. Now, holiness is not perfection, but holiness is separation. So I have to be separated from what characterizes the world. It doesn't mean I'm perfect, it just means I don't flow that way. Okay? But not only do I need to walk in holiness, but I also, which speaks to my character, I need to walk in right standing with God, which is the definition of righteousness, and my righteousness shows my conduct. So holiness shows my character, but righteousness shows my conduct. Did you get what I said? You cannot claim to have right standing with God, and your life is ratchet. Lady Cece, did I use that term right? You know, I do try to contemporize my language just a little bit, every now and then. But there are a lot of people walking around who are not living anything, but who want to lay claim to the righteousness of God. And there are a whole lot of people walking around whose character is anything but godly. Jesus demonstrates that to us, and we see that in the curtains. So now let's come to the measurements. Let's come to the measurements. Remember I told you that there were ten curtains divided into two sections? One set shows our duty to God. The other set shows our duty to humanity. I always get this mixed up. Up and down is vertical, right? All right, side to side is horizontal. So when you look at the cross, for we Protestants, the cross is bare, it's empty, it's bare, because Christ has risen from the dead, so He's not on the cross any longer. But the cross is important to us, because it represents the symbol, it represents the instrument, rather, upon which He made sacrifice to redeem us. But also, when we look But also, when we look at the cross, we see a twofold duty. There is the vertical line that goes up and down that represents reconciliation between humanity and God. But then there is a horizontal bar that represents reconciliation between humanity and humanity. We have a twofold responsibility. One, to be reconciled to God, that's our duty. The other one, to be reconciled to our brother and to our sisters. So two, ten curtains divided into two sections. Now, ten is significant. I said, ten is significant. There were ten virgins, five wise, five foolish. Hold your hands up. You have ten fingers, five on each hand. Look at your feet, you have ten toes, split between two feet. So ten equals division. Did you all get that? Know this, your father, my father, is the great divider. Ma, okay, let me give you scripture. Matthew, chapter ten, verses thirty-four and thirty-five. "Do not think that I came to bring peace on earth. I did not come to bring peace, but a sword; for I came to set a man against his father, and a daughter against her mother, and a daughter-in-law against her mother-in-law." He is the great divider. All right, let me give you a little more scripture. John, chapter seven, verse forty-three. "So a division occurred in the crowd because of him." Chapter nine, verse sixteen. "Therefore some of the Pharisees were saying, 'This man is not from God, because he does not keep the Sabbath.' But others were saying, 'How can a man who is a sinner perform such signs?'" "And there was a division among them." And then look at chapter ten, verse nineteen. "A division occurred again among the Jews because of these words." So he is the great divider. Do not be surprised that the word of God is not universally accepted, because he is the great divider. I, you know, I could have gone into, to talk about how in, in the book of Hebrews, it talks about the word that divides between soul and spirit, bone and marrow. He is the great divider. But then we have the presence of the Holy Spirit. And division is a characteristic also of every life that has been filled with the Holy Spirit. So, so let me go back, let me back up a little bit. Let me back up a little bit to, to where I, I was talking about the difference between righteousness and holiness. Remember, holiness speaks to what is in the character of Jesus, while righteousness represents his conduct. The only way that you and I can walk in holiness, the only way that you and I can walk in righteousness is we must be filled with the Holy Spirit. What happens when we're filled with Holy Spirit is that we will experience attraction or antagonism. But you never can experience apathy. And let me say it more simply. When you're walking in the Spirit, you will either be drawn to something or repelled to something. All right, let me speak to somebody who has been growing in the Lord. And as you're growing in the Lord, and you've given yourself and your soul and your body over to the Holy Spirit to lead and guide and direct you, that there are all of a sudden a whole bunch of things that you commonly used to practice or do in the past that now suddenly you are extremely uncomfortable with. It's because you have grown in the Lord. It's not because you found a particular passage of scripture that said, "Thou shalt not," but the spirit of the living God in you, because spirit identifies with spirit. Do we understand that? Spirit identifies with spirit. So I, when, when I get around to somebody who has a like spirit, we're flowing in the same direction, we can immediately begin to click together equally. When I get around somebody or something that is, runs contrary to my spirit, it's like... Let me try it this way. Have you ever seen something from a distance? And it looked really good. But the closer you got to it, it had this nasty stench. So from a distance, you were attracted. But as you got closer, you became antagonistic. You were repelled from it. I'm not saying way when I smell weed or marijuana. I, I'm, I'm that same way. That smell is so pungent to me that you can even smell it on the clothing of somebody who they themselves may not have smoked it, but is around somebody who did. I've had the experience of driving down the highway and had to put on my recycling, press my recycling air button in my car because somebody riding down the highway next to me or in front of me was smoking with their window down, and now I'm driving into it. And immediately, there is this sick feeling that comes into my stomach. Does anybody know what I'm talking about? Now, that's a very tangible carnal example of what should happen in the spirit. Listen to me, my friends. You cannot be drawn to everything. There are some things that because you have been filled with the Holy Ghost, nobody can even entice you to do, because you find yourself being repulsed by it. So when it comes to God, let me say it a different way. There's no gray area, there's no middle ground. It's black and white. Either you're for him or you're not. And what that brings us to then is that there will always be a point of division. All right, so let me move on. Is that good? Is that good stuff? Let me move on to the, to talk about the tent itself. Well, now, the tent itself, and we find description of the tent, first of all, in Exodus, chapter twenty-six, verse seven. "Then you shall make curtains of goat's hair for a tent over the tabernacle; you shall make eleven curtains in all." And then chapter thirty-six, verses fourteen through eighteen. "Then he made curtains of goat's hair for a tent over the tabernacle; he made eleven curtains in all. The length of each curtain was thirty cubits and four cubits the width of each curtain; the eleven curtains had the same measurements. He joined five curtains by themselves and the other six curtains by themselves. Moreover, he made fifty loops on the edge of the curtain that was outermost in the first set, and he made fifty loops on the edge of the curtain that was outermost in the second set. He made fifty clasps of bronze to join the tent together so that it would be a unit." All right. Now, coming to the scriptural specifications. Re- remember that just before this, we were talking about curtains that were comprised in a set of ele, of ten. But now these curtains comprise a set of eleven. Each section of these curtains were thirty cubits by four cubits, or fifty-four feet by seven feet. Like the curtains that we saw before, they were joined together by blue loops. But instead of gold clasps, they was joined by brass clasps that made one giant tent. They were made of goat's hair, and their color was black. And the reason for that is that white goats were a rarity, and may, still are a rarity in the east. And even today, Bedouins' tents are still made of goat's hair. And it's in the Song of Solomon, and I didn't put this text up, but in the Song of Solomon, where we're told that the goat's hair was black. So it was a tent of goat's hair that completely covered the first curtain of the tabernacle. What does that mean spiritually? What's the significance of it spiritually? Well, like the first curtain, this tent, or this curtain, rather, speaks of the inward nature of Christ's person and work. The inward. In other words, there's a work that has to go on, on the inside. Well, the material is significant too, because it was made of goat's hair. And because it was made of goat's hair, it speaks of Jesus as being the divine sin bearer. Uh, look at Leviticus, chapter nine, verse three. "Then to the sons of Israel you shall speak, saying, 'Take a male goat for a sin offering, and a calf and a lamb, both one year old, without defect, for a burnt offering.'" Chapter sixteen. And I'm not going to read all this, because this is a lot. But you'll note, uh, for, for you to take a look at it later, that I put up there, verses five through twenty-eight. "He shall take from the congregation of the sons of Israel two male goats for a sin offering, and one ram for a burnt offering." And then he goes into detail about that. If we could jump ahead to Numbers, chapter twenty-eight, verse fifteen. Numbers, chapter twenty-eight, verse fifteen. "And one male goat for a sin offering to the Lord; it shall be offered with its drink offering in addition to the continual burnt offerings." Now, don't, 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 don't get caught up with the offerings, because later on, we'll talk about the offerings and we'll talk about their particular symbolism and significance. Then the last text I want to look at is Matthew, chapter twenty-five, verse thirty-two. And Matthew twenty-five, verse thirty-two. Did I not put that one up? Let me, let me read that one. This is what happens when you move too fast. And I probably deleted it out as I was getting confused myself. I was, y'all was confusing myself with my outline. But Matthew twenty-five, verse thirty-two. This is Jesus speaking. "All the nations will be gathered before him, and he will separate them one from another, as the shepherd separates the sheep from the goats." So what's the spiritual significance? Jesus is the bearer of our sins. He's the bearer of our sins. Romans eight, three, Paul writes, "For what the law could not do, weak as it was through the flesh, God did, sending his own Son in the likeness of sinful flesh, and as an offering for sin. He condemned sin in the flesh." First Peter, chapter two, verse twenty-four. "And he himself bore our sins in his body on the cross, so that we might die to sin and live to righteousness; for by his wounds you were healed." Back to Paul in second Corinthians, five, twenty-one. "He made him who knew no sin to be sin on our behalf, so that we might become the righteousness of God in him." So now, if you want to know what happened, all you have to do is go and look at Leviticus, chapter sixteen. Write this down, because I didn't, I didn't put this whole chapter up. I, I try not to put whole chapters up, because it takes me so long to read through an entire chapter. But you would benefit greatly by looking at what is written in Leviticus, chapter sixteen. Let me just read a small portion of it as it talks about, um... Well, I don't even want to talk about it. There's two goats in Leviticus. One goat was slain, and its blood was sprinkled on or before the mercy seat. And that was done to satisfy God's demands against any law that was broken. The two goats themselves represent the death and burial of Christ. The second goat, this is interesting, is identified with the blood of the first one, but also with the sin of the nation. But rather than it being slain, it's led away by hand, generally by a man that was fit, righteous, and taken into an uninhabited land and released. What does that mean? Jesus had to die in order for our sins to be carried away. Isaiah, chapter fifty-three, verse twelve. We read these words. Isaiah fifty-three, verse twelve. I'm, I'm kind of off-script a little bit here, but I, I want to look at this one. That, this would, this would be a good place for, uh, if I give you a chance to practice that, for you to stick up a, suddenly. But Isaiah fifty-three, uh, verse twelve says this. "Therefore I will allot him a portion with the great, and he will divide the booty with the strong, because he poured out himself to death, and was numbered with the transgressors; yet he himself bore the sin of many, and interceded for the transgressions." So Jesus had to die in order for our sin to be carried away. What does scripture tell us? Except that our sin was removed from us as far as the east is from the west, that it was buried beneath the deepest, darkest sea. There was a song that we sing every now and then, and you all will re- recognize this here. You remember the song? "Living, he loved me; dying, he saved me; buried, he carried my sins far away; rising, he justified, freed me forever; and one day he's coming back, oh glorious day." See, that, that song is based upon what Christ did. And we see that in Leviticus with these two goats. Now, now, why goats and not sheep? There is a strong distinction, distinction in scripture between sheep and goats. My friends, when we talk about goats, we're not talking about the greatest of all time. A goat spiritually represented that which was negative or sinful. Now, it wasn't sinful to have goats. And then their color was such that it signified that. So that's the material. And the material for this roof was made from goat skins, goat hair. All right, so now let's talk about the measurements. Now, I already told you that in the first set of curtains, it had ten sets sewn together. But now in the second set, I told you that there are not ten, but there are eleven. So in the second curtain, we have five and six that together equal eleven. And they're held together not by golden clasps, but by fifty brass clasps. And they're attached by a hundred loops. Now, I want you to get this, because this is where we're going to stop today. And we'll come back to talk about the outer coverings next week. But I want you to get this. Do you remember when I said that ten was symb- Do you remember what I said that ten was symbolic of? Do you remember? Division. What's ten symbolic of? Division, all right? Now, eleven, and Minister Ruth, you can't cheat since you got it on the screen right in front of you, but eleven is symbolic of disintegration or disorganization. Eleven. Disintegration or disorganization. That's what eleven, eleven represents. We see this in even the story of Joseph. Joseph told his dreams to his brothers. And the one I'm mentioning specifically here is when he told the dream of eleven stars, that in his dream bowed down to him. Now, he was excited to tell his dream to his brothers. But I want you to look at what happens in Genesis, chapter thirty-seven, five through eleven. And I think I'm actually going to read about both dreams. Then Joseph had a dream, and when he told it to his brothers, they hated him even more. Now, why even more? Because their father preferred Joseph. Joseph was their father's favorite. They all wanted their father's love, but Joseph had their father's love, so they hated him. Verse six, "He said to them, 'Please listen to this dream which I had; for behold, we were binding sheaves in the field, and lo, my sheaf rose up and also stood erect; and behold, your sheaves gathered around and bowed down to my sheaf.'" Now, he, he, he doesn't, he doesn't say how many they were in this particular dream, but we know how many there were, because he's talking to his brothers. Verse eight, "Then his brothers said to him, 'Are you actually going to reign over us? Or are you really going to rule over us?'" "So they hated him even more for his dreams and for his words. Now he had still another dream, and related it to his brothers, and said, 'Lo, I have had still another dream; and behold, the sun and the moon and the eleven stars were bowing down to me.'" Now, the sun and the moon represent his father and his mother. "He related it to his father and to his brothers; and his father rebuked him, and said to him, 'What is this dream that you have had? Shall I and your mother and your brothers actually come and bow ourselves down before you to the ground?'" His brothers were jealous of him. But his father kept the saying in mind. So eleven is symbolic of disintegration or disorganization. Now, if we come over into the New Testament, we see it in the New Testament. Because when Judas betrayed Jesus, the other eleven disciples became hopelessly disorganized. And how do we know that? Because they forsook Jesus and fled. First John, chapter three, verse eight, we read these words. "The one who practices sin is of the devil; for the devil has sinned from the beginning. The Son of God appeared for this purpose, to destroy the works of the devil." So Jesus is the sin bearer, filled with Holy Spirit, who comes along and disintegrates or disorganizes the works of the devil. He came to destroy it, to destroy it. Hallelujah. You need to understand today that your enemy, the devil, has no power over you except that which you allow. Amen, somebody? Because Jesus has already destroyed any power that he has. When Jesus got up from the grave, he didn't get up empty-handed. He got up and he had within his hands the keys of death, hell, and the grave. And he broke, destroyed, disintegrated the power of those three over our lives. Amen. The enemy can tempt you, but he cannot do anything to you unless you yield to the temptation. I want you to recognize today that you have power over the devil. You don't pray to devils. You don't pray about devils. You, you, not one time do you ever see Jesus praying to the devils, or Jesus praying about the devil. Instead, he commanded them. And we command devils and demons in the same way. That's why if you're in our worship services, when we pray, and I begin to go into spiritual warfare, and I begin to bind up devils and demons here on earth, under the earth, or in the atmosphere, I tell everybody, hold your head up and open your eyes. We don't give the devil any respect whatsoever. We don't pray to him. We pray to God. But we bind up the devil. We take authority over the devil. And Jesus shows us that. God showed us that in the specifications and the significance of the tabernacle. Well, I hope that this is interesting to you, and that you are getting something out of it. I'm not finished talking about the coverings, but I'm going to be finished for this particular segment. We will continue it when we come back to it next week by talking about the outer coverings. Drop me a note if you think about it. If you're watching on YouTube, you can make comments. Send me a comment. Tell me what you think about this. I'm not, if you disagree with me, I'm not going to argue with you. I probably won't even respond to it. But let me know how it's impacting you. And those of you who have commented, I thank you for your comments, and I bless you. Because of your comments, I speak the favor of God over your life, and I bless you that you would continue to grow in Him. Amen? Amen? All right. Well, it's offering time. I'm going to pray for you tonight, but just before I, I get to pray for you, I want to offer you an opportunity to give, and we're putting it up on the screen now so that you can see the different ways that we have provided for you to give remotely to this ministry. If you're not a member here, your tithe is not expected. But if you're not a member of any house, and you want someplace to send your tithe, we would be pleased to receive it. We will be faithful with it. But in addition to tithing, whether you're a member of this house or not, if you're being blessed by these studies, and you're being blessed by what you've heard tonight, I want to encourage you to plant a seed, sow a seed, give a donation, to use a worldly expression, but a biblical description is that you're sowing a seed. Now, when you sow a seed, you sow a seed with the expectation that you're going to receive something from it. The Bible tells us that when we sow seed into good ground, that we can expect to reap a harvest one hundred sixty or thirty times beyond what we have sown. And I want you to know that Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center, here in the city of Charlotte, North Carolina, this is good ground. And so I encourage you to sow into this good ground. You can use GiveLify. It's an app that you can put on your mobile device. Once you open it and choose our church in the city of Charlotte, North Carolina, it will give you an opportunity to put in your credit card information. And you can hold on to that, because it has lots of churches in it. I've used it when I've traveled other places, and I've been to other churches, and I find that they were in there, and I'm able to give remotely. Particularly for those of you who are like me, you don't use your checks any longer, things of that nature. This is a good way for you to give. We also use PayPal. And you can find us in PayPal by looking us up as Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center, or our website, which is www.kindomfellowies.org. And then our third way that you can give remotely, and lots of you use this, and we're grateful to you for that, is through the Cash App. And our handle in the Cash App is dollar sign Kingdom Fellows, dollar sign Kingdom Fellows. However you give, I want you to know, we appreciate everything that you give. The amount that you give is not important. It's not about equal gifts, but it is about equal sacrifice. Together, we're getting to where God wants us to be. Amen? Amen. Well, let me pray for you tonight, even as you receive the word, that it would spring up into you in a well of righteousness, a spring of righteousness. And we thank God that it will be transformative to your very life. So Father, we thank you, and we bless you. We thank you for the privilege of giving. Let's scroll the announcements at the end. We thank you for giving of the people tonight, even as they give of their substance. We bless you, oh God, that you bless them in return. We thank you, even right now, that you're ministering to them in their need. Thank you that, because you are our Redeemer, you are our Sustainer, you are providing for us. We thank you that you are healing us, you are delivering us, you're opening doors that we cannot open ourselves. You're making a way out of no way. We bless you, oh God, that you are, even right now at this moment, reassuring us of your presence and your power, so that we would know we're not alone, that you're carrying us along the way, and we say thank you. Thank you right now, oh God, that those who have been suffering from the COVID-19 virus are being healed and delivered and transformed. We especially give you thanks and praise for those who are part of this ministry, whom we remember in our hearts, and we list upon our lips, that are suffering right now, that, Lord, you are with them to bring them through. So we thank you, God, that you will bring to completion the great work that you've begun in your people, and we bless you and we praise you for it in Jesus' name. Lord, we bless you now, that you would be, as the time of this will be aired, that you will be with Lady Cece, as she's on the road traveling to protect her and keep her, that, Lord, you will use her mightily and provide her a way back, oh God, safely, so that she'll find it all as well. We thank you, oh God, that you will be with us through the remainder of this week, that that which we are seeking to accomplish, we will accomplish it for your glory. We bless you, and we thank you for it now, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Well, God bless you tonight for your attention, for your participation. Again, please, drop me a note. Tell me how you're being blessed by this teaching. Ask me some questions, if you will, and I will look forward to you joining us again when we will be back on air, Sunday morning at 10:00 a.m., or next Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. Now, let me tell you, if you're in the area, we are open, and we invite you to come and worship with us. We have plenty of room for you to be safe, to safely distance from someone else. Just bring your mask. We have plenty of hand sanitizer. We have our, our thermometer that we can check temperature. All of that, we bless God for you, and we look forward to seeing you. Again, thank you tonight for, to Lady Cece and Minister Ruth for their assistance. Thank you all for tuning in. I bless you in the name of Jesus. Be blessed as you go with the remainder of your night. May God bless you going and coming, lying down and rising up again, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen and amen.